Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge the flag to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands on the nation under God, indivisible and liberating justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. Nice crowd tonight. Thank you for coming. Before we get started, I would like to recognize Ms. Diane Hare for her 75th birthday yesterday. Let's give her a little hand. Very nice. Let's move on, Louis. We've got, let's see here. We want to look at the financial report.
Do we have minutes?
The minutes of July 2nd.
Oh, look at that. I'm a little rusty. I'm a little bit rusty. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of July 2nd.
I'd some move for the approval of the minutes for July 2nd, 2014.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Harriet, financial report.
Some move.
We have a motion to approve the financial report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have several budget amendments.
Very good. Okay, Budget Amendment 2014-1010 to recognize the $500,000 community development block grant for the North Street Senior Apartment Project. What are we doing, Melissa? Is that the one you're doing?
Yes, we're recognizing revenue from the community development block grant for the purpose of contributing toward the North Street Senior Apartments, the amount of $500,000 to the loan TSC pass through to the developers.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to accept Budget Amendment 2014-010.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item, Budget Amendment 2014-011 to recognize the local government insurance trust reimbursement of $67,307 for the Hollinsworth House water damage from January 2014. Anything else with that, Steve?
Yes, that's to acknowledge again the receipt from legit for the damages that was discussed in detail at the last workshop regarding the Hollinsworth House. We received an additional $5,000. That was for this fiscal year. These two amendments, this one and previous one are for fiscal year 2014.
Very good. We have a motion to approve.
Some.
Have a motion and a second by Mr. Piner. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item, Budget Amendment 2015-001 to adjust the funding for the Maryland Main Street program by $12,500. Any more detail on that?
That's the first Budget Amendment of current fiscal year 2015. That's to decrease the funding to the Maryland Main Street program by $12,500, which is the current fiscal year complement to the budget amendment from last fiscal year that increased the Main Street program funding by $12,500, in addition to a one-time reimbursement for them.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Now, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very nice. Okay, I'm going to open up the floor to Mr. Robert Bustler. Mr. Bustler is here with Standard Solar. When we were at the Maryland Municipal League, yeah, that'd be great. When we were at the Maryland Municipal League shortly after the election, Commissioner Givens and Commissioner Piner and myself had stopped it and talked to Rob and we asked him to come to Elkton to make a presentation on solar panels. Did a little bit of research and we found that Cecil County Public Schools is currently in a program with you and it certainly got our interest and anytime that we have an opportunity to save our taxpayers' money, we want to certainly make a close look at this. So hopefully you can sell us tonight and show us how we're going to save our taxpayers a lot of money tonight. So the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm not sure I can sell you in the timeframe that we have, but I'm certainly going to try to explain what we were doing over at behind the Bayview Elementary School.
Can you give us your name and your address?
Yes, my name is Robert Bustler. I represent Standard Solar from Rockville, Maryland, but I actually live in Chestertown at 209 Mount Vernon Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to the next slide. Thank you. So the agenda was just to talk about Standard Solar. You three gentlemen got a little bit of that. I think at our booth at MML, you noticed that we had a poster up of the Cecil County project, which is a 2.5-megawatt, largest system that can be put on a non-utility interconnect. And that system has been approved and will be generating over $100,000 in its first year of operation, savings against their electricity use. I'm going to be explaining that in a bit of detail, showing a drawing of that, explaining aggregate net metering, about three minutes on that. It's very important for you to understand because municipalities, agricultural entities, and nonprofits can take advantage of the state's law regarding aggregate net energy metering, which means that a municipality can take all of its meters and virtually connect them to a large system maximizing the amount of savings that you get. I'll explain the solar PPA financing a bit, Elkton project opportunity and next steps. So let's go to the first one. Standard Solar founded in 2004, headquartered in Rockville, 75 employees. Last year's revenue, all in solar, was $50 million. And we are the largest provider of large-scale solar facilities in the state of Maryland. My region is eastern shore, which we're very, very active right now. We're doing the Cecil County project and we're also doing a facility for Pocahontas City that was just, the groundbreaking was two weeks ago, and that's a 2.1-megawatt system. At the bottom, you'll see the type of projects we work on. We really, 80% of our work is in the government and educational area. There's a lot of power purchase agreement opportunities with investors from all over the country interested in investing in projects specifically for municipalities and counties. Let's go to the next one. Our scope, starting with the planning, of which this would be the beginning of a discussion regarding planning a facility. We go through the financing, we do the design, we do the engineering, we also construct the facility ourselves, and then we enter into long-term operations and maintenance agreements on these projects. That would be directly to the power purchase agreement financier, not directly to the municipality. And one of the benefits of power purchase agreements are that the town doesn't have to put any money into the system. They just get a savings on every kilowatt hour that's produced by the solar facility. And the investors build the system and operate the system and make sure that it produces as much power as it can. That's the simple aspect of the PPA as opposed to trying to get grant funding or loans at low interest rates and then operating the system as a utility.
So I know you're going to get into it, but as of right now, there's no additional cost to the town. It's the soft costs of land and connection, I think you'll get into.
That's correct. And there is a little bit of town lawyer involvement during the contracts, just to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Very good.
You can probably imagine that.
Yes.
Let's go to the next slide. So this is the A1 drawing for the current set of construction documents for Bayview Elementary, right next to the technical school. Bayview is in the upper left-hand corner and the northeast road is on the left. And this is in the clearing behind the VOTEC school and the Bayview Elementary. And you can see that the grades were a little aggressive and we were able to locate 2.5-megawatts of power on that particular site. Originally, it was going to be a plan for an expansion of the VOTEC school, but then they took the building north of town and are renovating that at the moment, which I think you all are aware of. This is the largest system that can be accommodated.
What's the total acreage? If that's covered.
This is about 10.5, 10.8 acres. It used to be, for the same system size, it used to be about 13, 14 acres, but the modules are getting more and more efficient, so the total number of modules are reduced and the acreage is reduced as well. And that's going to be starting construction in the next six weeks. So let's go to the next one. So aggregate net metering. Again, I was talking about municipalities, nonprofit agricultural entities are allowed, you'll see that second step, aggregate net metering of multiple municipal facilities allows multiple meters to be connected to a solar array that takes advantage of the cost savings on a large facility as opposed to having to interconnect at a whole series of meters around a town, and it maximizes the amount of savings. For example, there are four large meters connected to the, or intended to be connected to the Bayview Elementary site from the VOTEC school through three elementary schools, including Bayview. And then there's an aggregation of those meters and the savings is spread around to all of them. And as you can imagine, if you know your electricity bills, the rates vary significantly between the, all of their ones. So it's very helpful to include as many as possible because a lot of the smaller ones are much more costly per kilowatt hour. But this again can only be done by municipalities and counties, nonprofits, like colleges, universities, and then also agricultural facilities. Let's go to the next one. Power purchase agreement, no upfront capital expenditure, as I said, predictable energy costs for term of the agreement. The fluctuation of power production is half a percent per year. We have the systems in place where we can calculate exactly what the solar is going to be, so you know how much power you're going to get at what rate over a 20-year period of time, which is very beneficial in terms of planning for costs of electricity over a long period of time. You may have seen what happened with DPL in the last six months in terms of the surcharges that were put on municipalities. In the case of the Cecil County Board of Ed, they received a projected 25%, 30% benefit from that change to their charges. They were going to get an extra penny charge on those meters, but now they're not going to receive those, which is, they weren't expecting that. No operational performance risk on the part of the municipality. That's all held by the PPA provider. Allows for the site host to benefit from federal and state tax incentives, which is great, and an option to purchase the system through life of the agreement. After year six, there are a whole series of options that the municipality can exercise in terms of taking over part or all of the facility. All the tax benefits are taken out before the seventh year.
Very nice.
So, next one. I was told I had about 15 minutes, so I wanted to make sure that I got anything going.
Perfect. You're doing good.
So this is the triangle of organizational structure for the contract agreements. You see the town of Elkton in the upper right-hand corner, Standard Solar as developer, EPC and O&amp;M, and then the PPA provider provides the system to the owner. What we tend to do is develop these projects and then when it comes to bringing in financiers to own the systems, we actually compete the financing to make sure that we're getting the best deal for the ultimate municipality or nonprofit entity. That's worked out very well for us. It does take six to 12 months to go through that process to get us to that point, just so you know. Next one. So sole source project timeline for a 2.48-megawatt PV system, process to contract to completion is nine months. Construction's only three months out of the total process, but it really is all the contracting, all the development, all the planning, getting everything in place, and assumes no delays in contract negotiation, permitting, and final utility approval. So if it was to start process in August, we would expect to be finished in April of next year and turning the system on at that particular time. Now, one benefit of, I should say, one issue to be aware of is that in 2016, there's a current plan to sunset the 30% ITC tax credit. So there's now starting an acceleration to make sure these projects are getting completed. They have to be completed by the end of 2016. So we're now starting to get more and more interest to do this sooner as opposed to later. Next one. Local projects. I mentioned the WSSC project, which is a very large public procurement project we won two years ago for Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, and that was two large facilities at two of their wastewater treatment plants. That within it was a very large procurement, but also then provides opportunity for multiple Maryland governments to piggyback on top of that procurement as opposed to going through their own procurement. And there's a whole list of opportunities for counties and municipalities to do that. Partly because I live in Chestertown, four of our biggest projects started four and three years ago. We're in Kent County with the Wharton facility at the high school, Kenny Duville wastewater treatment plant, a smaller facility at Fairleigh Lagoons, and then the town of Rock Hall put one in, 1.26-megawatts, at their wastewater facility, and they're very happy with that. I mentioned the two recent ones that are now under construction, Cecil County Board of Ed and Pocahontas City downtown.
What type of issues are you having with, I want to say, maintenance or any kind of problems that you have with the agreement, with the purchaser and the buyer?
We haven't, we haven't had any problems, partly because we have relationships with several of these financiers on multiple projects, and they have people in charge from their organization who oversee the operations and maintenance as well as our own staff. We actually do the work, but they're monitoring to make sure that it's adequately serving the needs of the off-taker.
I'm saying that if we were to invest in this, what guarantee does the purchaser have in order to get maintenance for any kind of issue that they have?
Well, for those 20 years, the maintenance is the responsibility of the PPA provider, not the municipality. So they are operating the facility for your benefit, and you can imagine that if they're going to be selling you power at a fixed rate, it behooves them to make sure that they're producing all the power they can all the time. So they're incentivized to make sure that it's operating all the time. You don't have any operational responsibilities or financial responsibilities in that regard. And the power purchase agreement, which is about a 40-page document, spells out all those responsibilities.
I just want to ensure that if we were to go to this system, that anything would happen, we do have somebody there not waiting in line for the next county or state to, you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying.
Now, California uses this system a lot in California?
Well, the power purchase agreement system is used all over the country. It was developed by one of our partners, Sun Edison, and it's used mostly uniformly in terms of doing these type of projects.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to go through in greater detail about the requirements within the PPA that spells out the responsibilities for O&amp;M, but the municipality doesn't have responsibilities and there never is a circumstance where the owner of the system wants to have the system go down because they've got another project over here. They want it to be, you don't pay for any power that's not generated.
What, once, and maybe you'll wrap that up when you, when you get to this point, but once the unit, once the solar panels are in place, all we're doing is mowing grass probably around them.
Or we're mowing grass for you, if that's part of the PPA, yeah. All the maintenance inside the fence is the responsibility of the owner of the system.
Very nice.
Yeah? Thank you. Thank you. So what typically happens in the first three months is there's an exploration of what site opportunities there are, see what the, we would review all the electricity meters and what the history of usage is and what's proposed changes to those costs of electricity. It can vary significantly and it does matter where you place the system in terms of what the, let's say, the sponsoring meter is and what its costs are, but that would be done in the first several months. And then you can go to a non-binding circumstance. Again, this is, would all be done for free at no cost to you. An application can be made to Delmarva Power for interconnection and they can tell you what's the maximum system. We're not allowed to know for security reasons, national security, they don't let anybody know what the electricity grid is doing or where everything is coming from. So we have to submit the application with all the information about the proposed site, and then we hear back whether that's okay, whether it has to be downsized somewhat or whatever. But we could also look at several sites in that process and have preferred sites. In the case of Cecil County, they specifically wanted to use that site, so there was no question. We had to then go find out what it was going to take to interconnect with Delmarva Power.
Very good. If we interconnect with Delmarva, we have to be regulated by the Public Service Division, right?
This falls under the net metering laws of Maryland, so yes. It's part of the regulation, but it falls under a series of laws underneath that, so you don't have to go in front of PSC, if that's what you're asking. So following up on our meeting of several, several weeks or about a month and a half ago, we're interested in helping as part of all of our activities here, helping discover for the town what are the best opportunities. We talked about the wastewater treatment facility, but we could look at several other sites, and it would be great to see what all the electricity meters are, how large they are, what their costs are, and help come up with a, let's say, a development proposal that you can consider. That would be our interest.
Very good. I'm actually not going to take any questions from the audience over this, but we're not going to make any decisions, of course, today or tomorrow or the next day, but I would like to have your feedback, feedback when we have the public comment opportunity of the meeting, and I will open it up and you can address it with it at that time.
Okay.
Is there, is there any additional slides?
No, I think, well, there are some examples of projects. If we have three minutes, we can just run through those.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we have five projects at the end.
Yeah, let us in.
We can skip my information, of course. So this is the facility in Kent County, right behind the high school, very successful in terms of the power production, challenging in terms of it being the first connection for a chop tank on the eastern shore. That was a little bit of a challenge, but we worked through that, and now it's operating well and producing good power and savings for the joint venture between the county and the Board of Ed. In Kent County, they did it together as opposed to separately. Next one. Purdue, I'm actually meeting tomorrow with Purdue for three more large projects in the southern part of the Delmarva Peninsula. This is the Bridgeville, Delaware feed mill. We also did the facility in front of the headquarters, which if you go to Ocean City, you're driving right by the headquarters facility. We did that one as well. Next one. We've done several projects for University of Maryland, all power purchase agreements, all using their contracts, all based on locations that they specified. We did not pick the sites for them. Next one. You may be aware of the projects at University of Delaware. Most, most visible is the arena facility that's covered with solar on the south-facing part of the arch route, 850 KW. And that was four years ago. That was very early. Tried to pick the ones that are nearby here. And you mentioned Mayor, the Anarondo Community College canopy system on their parking facility. There was a series of grants provided to facilitate this for an education facility and for the canopy facility. It creates obviously good shading, but it also generates quite a lot of power. This is just a short list. We have about 400 projects in Maryland that we could list, but I don't think we need to do that. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, I guess one question. What's the, and I think you answered this for me earlier, but as far as the acreage of land that is needed to perform this task, are we looking at 10 acres?
Well, to maximize the system, you're looking at 10 acres, but you can look down to four acres for a 1-megawatt system.
Okay.
You could put in a series of 1-megawatt systems at different locations and then have one PPA that ties them all together.
Very good. That was my.
If you don't have one site that you have to find, you can use variable sites.
Okay, that was going to be my question.
It's always better, though, to bundle them together so that it can be part of a larger PPA.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Have you talked to Cecil County at all about this?
Yes. In fact, the discussion with the Board of Ed started with a presentation of Cecil County two and a half years ago. They had invited me in, two of the commissioners invited me in to talk to the staff. We started three weeks down the road of doing this very thing for a whole countywide program, and then there was a change of government structure in Cecil County, which then put everything on hold for about a year. I've understood in talking to Mr. Willis that the county is interested again, and I'm expecting to hear from them to get started looking at some of their. We have five sites in the county that we had been looking at that would be very beneficial.
So we could, in conjunction with them?
You could, yes.
And that would be a further cost savings, is that right?
If you maximize the system up to 2.5-megawatts, you're maximizing your cost savings.
Period.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And you said after six years, then it's a purchase, you have an option to purchase?
No, the PPA, yeah, you have options to purchase. It's a 20-year term, typically can be 25-year term for the PPA, but after the sixth year, then there are a series of options to purchase at fair market values at that point. All the tax benefits are taken out prior to that point.
Right, so the hard cost is buy your investors into your company and then selling it back to us.
Mm-hmm.
Just making sure I got that.
Yep, absolutely.
So then at that time, in purchase, then it would be a revenue source, a potential revenue source.
Yes, if it makes sense to you to purchase it at that particular time, then of course, right.
Excluding any type of semi-fixed cost or soft cost of operations.
You would be taking over the operations and maintenance or paying someone else to do it, and then you would be responsible for making sure it's operating fully to get the maximum benefit, which is one of those trade-offs between purchasing it yourself and having someone else own it and operate it on your behalf.
What's the normal life of this type of system?
We say 35 years is typical if well-maintained. Over each year, the modules actually degrade slightly from pollution and grit, so after the 20th year, they've lost 20% of their power production, but they're still at 80%. And then the issue is just maintaining the facility in the same way. There's no sound, no movement of any kind, there's no smell, so there's really just the degradation of the material on site, and if it's well-maintained and checked, it shouldn't be a problem.
And the fixed cost or startup cost of a project, maximum project, would be somewhere in what neighborhood?
For you all.
The investment.
If we were to do it ourselves, correct? If you were to do it yourselves, a system of this size, about $5 million for a 2.5-megawatt system, that would be a good guess. Depends on the site, depends on the cost of interconnection.
All right. Very good. Charlie, you're good?
I'm good.
Earl, you're good?
I'm good. Are you good?
You can hit the clean solar panels? I'm sorry? Do you clean them some way?
Well, they actually are natural cleaning. They angled at 25 degrees, so the rain tends to slough off pollen or anything like that.
There's no residue or pollutants that?
If they're, if it's near a plant that's producing pollutants, it's, it's good to clean them at least once a year, sometimes twice a year, especially if they're in an agricultural area. Sometimes there's a lot of chaff from the, like, corn harvesting, there's a lot of dust that gets on the panels and it can stick, so that is, that's time to wash it. But for the most part, the rain naturally washes it.
Any other questions?
No, I was just thinking, if we put this down to our treatment plant, there's a agricultural activity right next to it.
There is.
Might be that we probably have to cease because that could be a source of dust.
I wouldn't want to say we wouldn't stop the agriculture activity, it's just that we'd probably wash once a year as opposed to not at all. Because it's only during harvest that it's a problem.
It's dusty.
Yes, dusty.
Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see you all again.
It won't be a bad trip going back to Chestertown, right?
No, it's only 47 minutes.
Very good. Make sure you stop at.
That's at the speed limit, by the way. Just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Can I unplug this or would you like me to stay and hear comments?
No, you can unplug. Let's, I can give you a couple of minutes to unplug.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we can continue to conduct what we have to do. I think we've got three items.
I'm good.
You have ten. But actually, I think Michelle has to tighten, don't you, Michelle? Okay, so we'll give her a few seconds. Oh, we're good now. See how quick that was? Okay, I'd like to invite Severn Trent to give a discussion on the months of May and June. Mr. Ken Banner?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to give the Mayor and Council and the residents a status report on the water and wastewater treatment operations for April and May.
Thank you.
Both April and May, we did not experience any excursions or anything like that. In May, we, some of the results averaged for the month of May, we averaged 3.0 BOD for the wastewater treatment plant, very good, 2.1 on the total suspended solids, and the total nitrogen leaving the facility was 1.4 milligram per liter, which is excellent. And the phosphorus was .04 milligram per liter, not a really good number. Plants are performing well. We had, we have been busy doing a lot of things. We conducted two annual inspections for two of the town's local industries recently. It was a joint effort with MDE. They were with us when we did the inspection. We did the flying jade and we did the, we did not do the hospital. We did not do the hospital. Delaware Express was the other industry we did. Very impressed with their efforts. You know, the Flying J, they're under new ownership. I think they've been under new ownership for a year and a half or so. And, you know, they've had to make some improvements to the system, and they've done a good job up there and done everything in compliance. And, of course, Delaware Express, they have a very impressive operation as well. We had King Farms come in. They removed 20 tons of bio solids from the waste for treatment plant. And we also, another large item was, of course, Bell Hill Tower went back online at the beginning of June. I know you guys don't know that. And interesting enough, when we went back online with the tower, we started experiencing pressure problems up at Patriots Run Development. So we've been working on that to resolve those issues. And we think we're onto something real good there.
Very good.
So we're getting ready for the, basically getting ready to do the race, to do the dredging of the race. That's going to be a large project for the town. And there's some things we want to get set for that project.
Very good.
Other than that, one other thing that was interesting, the silo that we use for storage of the bio solids at the waste for treatment plant. Well, you know, we've been online now, I guess, six years with that system. And the biomaterial, when we, after it dries, it becomes very coarse and abrasive. And when it comes out of the dryer, you know, we airlift it up into the silo, right, through this pipe. And it's like sandpaper, and it wears holes in the pipe. And so we've been patching this pipe now for six years. Every time we get a hole, you know, we have to patch it. So recently, we actually cut out the sections, certain sections get to have the most abrasion. Everywhere it makes a bend. So we cut out the bends, and we replace just those sections. So we should be in good shape, and we're hoping that it'll last for another, we're hoping 10 years maybe.
Very good. That's good news.
Yeah, so that's about all I have for you.
Anyone from the board have anything for Severn Trent tonight? Staff?
I would just like to thank Ken for all the help for the Elton Line stuff.
Oh, yeah. We're getting ready for that next Friday.
Very nice.
So we have a lot of openings yet. Everybody in the room, like to play.
Anyone else have anything else? Staff, any questions?
No, thank Ken. Ken does a great job running the plant, and I don't think we've ever had any problems with our permit at all.
We have done really well, I think. You know, we haven't had any, we haven't had a violation yet. That's really good news. And permits are all up to date, you know?
And the nitrogen and phosphorus limits that are in our permit, they far exceed what the expectations initially were. So that easement process is working.
Yeah, excellent. It's an excellent process. I tell you, the total nitrogen, we've averaged every year about 50% of the permitted limit, 50% less. So the limit is based on four milligrams per liter, and we've been doing two milligrams per liter every year since it's just the place that's been online. It's a fantastic facility. It really is. So I'm pleased to operate it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken. Thank you. See you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, Lewis, I think you're on. Scott, your report?
The first item I have is an easement agreement with a company called Pivotal Utility Holdings, who is once known as NUI Utilities, and is currently trading as Elkton Gas. This facility, this easement was discussed at the workshop and involves a, running a gas line in the area between Buck Hill Farms and tractor supply up behind Hertrick in order for Hertrick Chrysler Dodge Jeep to have a gas supply for their energy. I think this agreement is a good agreement, and I would highly recommend that the board accept Elkton Gas's recommendation to accept.
Very good. Do we have a motion to accept the gas easement for this gas service line?
Absolutely.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
No.
Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is a public works agreement with Wounded Hill Roads LLC for the development known as Village of Quail Ridge Section 2. There's about 17 lots left to develop there. And upon execution of this agreement and posting a letter of credit, the town will ensure that the public improvements, which will largely consist of finished course of pavement on Gene Marie, I mean, Binary Court and Vin Strive, will be completed along with the conversion of a stormwater pond from a sediment pond to a stormwater pond. I recommend that the board authorize this public works agreement with Wounded Hill Roads LLC, so we can issue building permits and get that project moving.
Do we have a motion to approve the public works agreement with Village of Quail Ridge?
Send move.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Are these, I didn't see anything in the agreement where they were owner-occupied. Are these units allowed to be rented afterwards or used as investment properties?
I don't know. They're independently owned. We don't have any, a public works agreement doesn't control anything other than zoning. Doesn't control what the owner does with those properties.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is a lease agreement with Sandy Island LLC. Mr. Downs had developed a commercial lease agreement. As a matter of fact, I think there's two versions of it. One version is that the agreement would be good for a five-year period at a term of, I mean, a term of five years and an annual compensation of $1,500. There's no, no security deposit will be necessary since it's a parking lot. And I think all the other standard clauses are probably recommended by council for this type of agreement. You said there was another, the other version is a, doesn't have, I don't think, the compensation in it. So I don't know if there's a question about the board wanting to change the compensation or the term. The initial agreement was for a one-year term, but I believe that I can certainly see Sandy Island's position to have at least five years for the capital investments they're going to put into this. So I don't, I think that's a bad thing. It's up to the board as to compensation on an annual basis.
We had a workshop last Wednesday, and we went a little bit in concept with the Sandy Island agreement. And I think we got some feedback from it. And one of the items that came back was the term of the lease being only a one-year lease, wanted to extend it out to a five-year lease. And I think hopefully, maybe the board will go for that. And there was a, I think we kind of talked about the $1,500 moving forward. But we've got both plans on the table, and I'm going to open it up for a motion. And it can be, the motion can be placed on any which way that any commissioner would like to make that motion. And we'll either see if we get a second and further discussion from that point.
I also think that, from the last workshop, I think there was some miscommunication. I think DJ and I, certainly we talked, and certainly we would like to recant on $1,500 and being concert with the two of them, and let that be $1,000, if that's okay, if that's okay with you.
So was everyone good with a five-year term lease?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for $1,000 a year, five-year term with no security deposit necessary.
We have a motion on the floor?
I would like to second that.
We got a second? Do we have any discussion?
No, and I think, because on the contract, I think, a couple of items you mentioned, you certainly addressed about the number of years, and I'm in agreement with that.
Just quickly.
Yes, sir.
When we took the meter readings, what months were those?
They were September, October.
September, October. So it was only a two-month period, and we're basing this on that.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Did you have another question?
No, I think there was something written as far as the language needs to be changed as far as taxes. They certainly won't be paying the taxes, we've been doing that.
It was in the new agreement?
Right, so that's there.
There were three statements, and the one that addressed the issue you were talking about, that's actually taken out.
That's fine.
And the other really has to do with personal property taxes or anything along the premises, so that who's ever personal property is, it's on there, pays the personal property taxes associated with it.
That's fine.
Very good. Thank you. Old business. None? No, no. Go ahead, Mayor.
I do have one thing. At our last town meeting, there was a large discussion regarding the water bill. Someone brought to my attention a great idea, and we call the water bill a bill which is not strictly water. It's water, sewer, trash, and your leave pickup and the bay fee. $40.85 is the trash and bay fee. I think we need to change that to a town service bill, because it really is the services we're giving to the residents, just, if you want to think about it. But it's not just a water bill, the bill they're receiving, and people seem to confuse entire bills.
But even though it's a service bill, I guess it's still easier for them and efficient, I guess, to concoct and put everything on that one bill.
Well, it is for the town, that's what I'm saying, but it's all our services.
I think, I think what you're saying, a lot of people will see the bill and confuse it by not looking at the other items. And you know that it's water and sewer, they're looking at the figure at the bottom. And we all understand sitting up here that there are certain parts of that bill. And it's a matter of trying to convince people, you know, that this is not the big bill that you have here, there's all the things with it.
Wow, you guys have teed this up for me.
So how would you?
You have teed it up for me.
It's a matter of trying to educate the public what that bill is.
And it is. And, you know, I'll kind of bring it out. I agree with you. It is a service bill. And one thing that I'd like to see, maybe we'll try to do it for next budget if we can possibly do it, I'd like to remove the trash fee out of the utility bill or the water and sewer bill, services bill, unless we change the name to a service bill. But as a resident, you can't deduct your water and sewer bills. But if we were able to get that trash fee put over into your tax bill, then you would be able to deduct that off of your taxes. It's not a tremendous amount of money, but you're looking at probably $80 a year that's related with trash. It could be an $80 deduction to you. No matter how you skin the cat, there's a way that you might be able to deduct that $80 off your taxes rather than on the water and sewer side of things. So that's something that I'd like for us to take a look at. But I do agree with you. I think we need to consider, it's more than just a water and sewer bill. So let's all give that some thought over the next, until the next meeting or two, and we'll move forward then.
Thank you.
Any other old business for you, Mayor Jeff?
I don't think we had a chance to discuss or congratulate the people that were involved with the Fourth of July display. But I think that was an excellent exhibition of fireworks. Nice timing, and I think we done well as far as choosing the right time. Me and Commissioner Gibbons kind of timed the fireworks just to see where we were at in the fireworks exhibition. And I think it was really done in a nice manner of time. And everything was well put together as far as, I'd like to thank the police department, Public Works, and especially the people that had anything to do with setting up the park and getting it ready for us. Like I said, I think everyone done a great job.
Thank you.
Mayor, yes, everybody that was involved. I know if I start saying names. But the other issue, I mentioned, one of the citizens asked about the, what you call it, speed bumps on Bethel Street. I know Commissioner Gibbons talked about that several times. But that work is ready to begin, right, Lewis? Mr. Lewis?
I was looking for Dan.
He looked that way, I thought it was no Lewis. So is that work ready to be done?
It's water road restoration, yes.
Okay, I just want to give a answer back to the citizen. So probably in the next month or two, something should be happening.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Also, it's old business, Lewis, at our workshop, I mentioned to you that the residents at Independence Drive wanted speed bumps. Have those levels blown out yet?
I think so.
Can you start putting the survey together? She's mailing them out.
Okay, thanks.
And Huntsman, I think.
Huntsman.
We're going to Huntsman, too. Okay, that's it. Killer speed bumps. Here we go. Not diagonal.
Not diagonal.
That's right. Can't do diagonal ones, safety.
I just have one thing, and it's actually old business on a humorous note, so people indulge me just a little bit. It's been brought to my attention on several workshops and town hall meetings, that there are certain residents that attend the town hall meetings that leave with eyes that are sore. Because at different times during these meetings, as myself or Mayor Alt look down the glare from our foreheads, seem to hurt their eyes. So, Mr. Reed, if you would, there's five envelopes on that back table. Could you grab those for me real quick? I don't see Gary here, but if you could give one to yourself, Mr. Nichols, Mr. Littenberg, and Mr. Lemon. I don't see Mr. Stewart here yet. I appreciate it. Thank you for indulging me in this. Let's go ahead and open them up, please. I would also, while they're taking their time in opening these things up, I'd maybe like to comically talk about making a motion that that particular road that they sit on back there, we can now name Relapse Road. Either for, because they forget who they're talking to, what they're talking about. Go ahead, open them up, gentlemen, please. Please. Now, the town is gracious enough to humbly give me a faint check. So there you go.
There you go. Perfect.
Much better. Now, I want to remind Relapse Road that these are sunglasses. These should help your eyes. They are beauty protection. But they will not protect you. They're not safety glasses. They will not protect you from any crap that keeps coming from that section back there. There you go. There is an extra one, please give it to Gary. If anybody else should join your club or your row back there, from here on out, those sunglasses, you need to provide for them.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome, sir.
Very good.
That's all I have for old business.
Does the town pay for these? You can't pay for them.
I pay for them. Commissioner, you're paid to pay for them. Okay, reports from the mayor. I had a few things that I wanted to bring up. Thank you, DJ, for that.
Absolutely. This is a track.
I wanted to make the, I wanted to make the, continue to promote our Buy Local program. I mean, we've been going with this with the town. I think we've got the town staff on board. Anywhere that we can see that we can buy local, we're buying local. And there's going to be some cases that we can't. And I think if you look through the payment of the bills, there's some cases that happened prior to us kicking off this initiative. But I can continue to stress that if we can continue to buy local, it's going to help our whole economy the best we can. And so we're going to do our part, and I'm just hopeful that our residents can do their part and start to shop local, buy local, and follow our lead. But I think we're right on top of it. We're moving in the right direction. I think just recently, we have put a, one of the town trucks, we put it on bid, and there's going out to bid, and we've got, sent it out to a couple of our local dealerships. And hopefully, they'll come back in line with the state contract, and we can buy our large equipment there also. So we're hoping for that.
I'd like to add one more thing before we close on this. Patriots Run opened up their golf course on July 4th, and I think it was very successful. I just want to commend them on a great opening for their establishment and bringing back golf here in the Elkton or Cecil County area.
Because there's a couple of grants that I'm voting on and I call and ask questions and stuff, but the 500,000 community block grant. And then there was the first senior center where they came in, I was told that they came in and they already knew what grants they could apply for, so on and so forth, because they've already done those things before. And then Sandy Island, Minnehans, they applied for a grant through us and stuff. How does everybody know, or businesses, there are other businesses on Main Street, and I know Mary Jo is involved in a lot of this, but what about businesses off Main Street? Is there any availability to them as far as any type of grant money?
Sure, it depends on the type of grants that they're looking for. If they're looking for tax credits, there's a lot of small business assistance grants that Commissioner Mclavie is very familiar with. There's a small business at the library, they have a small business-
There's a small business librarian who has an office there. There's SBA for Cecil, Hartford County, and also the Cecil County Economic Development with Lisa Webb, they do a loan system as well.
So there's really no, we don't have anything at our disposal that we can give a business that comes into town or a business that comes saying, "Hey, I have no idea what grant to even think about applying for."
Sure, if they come in, I'll direct them, I'll try to get as much information, direct them to the right person at the state, the Woody Minister for those types of grants. A lot of the larger developments, for instance, housing developers, such as the property across the street and the one on High Street, they build housing for a living, they usually work off bonds or other types of grants, so they approach the state directly. Sometimes they need other grants that can only come to the town, such as the CDBG grant and the supplemental grant.
Right.
It's a $10 million project across the street, they requested $500,000 because they were able to request a number of grants from a number of sources.
Right.
But it's used to each business as to what they're looking for. Some of them are looking for tax credits, and others maybe just looking for help with business plans and that sort of thing. Side grants, which Commissioner Mclavie does quite well.
All right, thank you. On the, a couple of things that I'd like to move, have the board move forward on, is collectively, in the next couple of workshops, understand, at least from my understanding, a clear and defined vision of where we're going to be in 20 to 25 years from now. And to take a slogan that Mayor Alt used, and I can't remember when he used it, it was in the last couple of months, "We are Elkton." And I really like that, because we are Elkton, and we're one huge family, some of us may be dysfunctional at times, but we are one family. And how do we move forward? What do we want to be 20, 25 years from now? I have a lot of ideas, you know, one of the larger ones, of course, is economic development. We need an economic development. Now, what we do there, how we fund it, who funds it, who runs it, I'm not sure. But collectively, we need to start asking these hard questions of how do we fill these vacancies? We have a fantastic anchor in town, and again, thank you very much for investing the large amount of money that you have. But at this point in time, in my eyes, business-wise, it's the tail wagging the dog. And when is it? If we don't do our due diligence by helping make sure that there's more people that come into downtown to support all of these local businesses, then when is the tail going to get tired of wagging the dog? It just becomes too heavy in the town being the dog. So I think there's a lot of hard questions that we need to start asking ourselves of where we're going, where do we want to go? And I think, again, everything should be left on the table. The accreditation for the police department, I did some investigating in that, and I've done a lot of investigating on that in the last month, and I've talked to a lot of towns, big and small, I've talked to a lot of police officers, and I found that there has been no cons to the accreditation program through the police department. I do know, in talking to a few people, that former police chief Ryan was a big fan of it, and then he had instructed current police chief Matt Donnelly to do that, and then somewhere along the line, it kind of fell off track of some sort. And I don't know if that has to do with money, I haven't been able to find a definitive answer to that. But I've talked to a lot of towns, and just to bring the board up to speed of what I've found out and also the public, the accreditation program is a federal guideline of standards and policies, and what they do is they promote responsibility and accountability to both yourself and to the town. It's $3,500 a year, there's actually two different programs, and Lieutenant Zerillo, you're familiar with this, right? So at any time, please correct me if I'm a little off-base, but I've done a lot of homework.
I think one of the good things is we've got, Chief Donnelly will be here next Wednesday for the workshop, and he's going to go over that with you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that's all part of the program. He's going to talk about the accreditation program and-
Communication.
Yeah, but, I mean, we were, it's because you brought it up before.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Look, we jumped on.
Good, 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 good. So as far as small towns, it's $3,500 a year, it's 197 points, thereabouts, as far as policies and procedures. The hard cost, or upfront cost, is $3,500 a year, so three-year contract, but talking to insurance companies, it looks like that we already get a break on their insurance of roughly $10,000 a year to begin with, so it offsets it quickly. The unfortunate part is the soft cost, the man-hours to actually implement the smaller program, they have two programs, 197 points, the other one is 477 points. Both the same cost, but as far as the man-hours, but it would take the whole town to be involved in this, it's not something that's-
And a lot of times you have a dedicated person within the police department that's kind of all they do is the accreditation, keeping up on accreditation, maintaining policies and so forth.
And it helps, as my understanding, it also helps as far as any type of lawsuits further down the road, because it cuts it off at the pass, it doesn't allow us to make any type of mistakes, that we would have anything that would jump up at us, as far as like EEOCs or any discrimination type of cases, is that right?
Yeah, it strengthens your policies, it keeps you to the best common practices that are out there, it keeps you up to date with whatever the heck's going on.
Okay. And you said next Wednesday, right?
Yeah, next Wednesday.
All right. And hope everybody comes, nice and proud.
Oh, yeah.
Good. The other thing is, as far as, please see accreditation, we're fine, that is it, short topics tonight.
All right, thank you.
Maybe Chief Donnelly could also just give us a brief synopsis.
Oh, oh, for next week.
Or next Wednesday, because they're running out of space over there, and give us some idea of what's going on, how you make it do, and what's needed to be done for the future, or space though.
I'm actually looking forward to that presentation next week. Okay, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for everyone to have an opportunity to speak, and first on the agenda, we have my favorite person, who I've known many, 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 many years, and I'm glad to see you again, Becky, and I'm hoping that you're feeling well, and I'd like to, if you'd like to come up and speak in front of the microphone, or you can go there, however you want to go, but Ms. Becky McKenney, please state your name and your address.
Okay, here, we'll put- Okay, my name is Rebecca McKenney.
I want to put that mic in front of her, please, sir, while you're up.
Yes, I mean-
There we go, perfect.
Thank you, thank you, sir. My name is Rebecca McKenney, I'm from Cecil County, 75 years. If you don't like me, you have to say it now, because I tell you what's going on in this town. I've been here longer than some of them, and I know what's going on in this town, a lot of it is confusing, that nobody cares about the seniors. Well, do you think someday you're not going to get older? Do you think you won't make a mistake? Well, you're wrong, because you better think again.
So what are you thinking that we should be doing for the seniors?
I think we need to do a lot for us.
Okay.
We should need some things that the senior can get. I mean, we have one restaurant that I've been in, that does do a lot for the seniors, and they care about us. If we're past 70 years old, you get a discount.
Well, I think with that note, I'd like to meet with you outside of the town meeting, and you and I will have these discussions on what we can do for the seniors.
Okay, that's not a problem with you, because you know I'm going to be upset if I don't-
I know, believe me, I know.
And then God bless you at the next meeting. Okay, I'd like to say, I wanted to thank Mary Jo for caring a lot about me when I was in the hospital. I went through a lot with cancer and everything, died on an operating table, but God brought me back.
Very good.
I had to have pacemaker and stents and everything else, but I am okay.
Very nice.
And hopefully, very soon, I can walk, because God bless this town when I don't walk. I will buy, I know exactly where you can buy drugs, believe me, I know everybody.
Well, I need to talk to you off of the record, so you can tell me all that.
Well, Robbie, you know I'm going to tell you.
I know you're going to tell me.
You know I ain't going to bite my tongue, you know.
I knew that.
Okay, I also want to thank Mary Jo for what she's doing in the town for the children and their dogs, she's done a lot for me. She's let me help her with the moon bounce for years, and I will continue to help her. We also have meetings.
There you go, that's good, we had you too close.
Oh, okay.
Now you're perfect.
Thank you. Anyway, we need to also thank Mr. Finer, Mr. Givens, I really don't know the new commissioner, and really, that's it, can't thank him for something I don't know him now. Okay, and I want to thank him, Mr. Givens, come to the hospital two or three times this evening, and I really do appreciate it, Mr. Givens. Mr. Finer, I want to thank you mostly for coming to our town, things that we have downtown for the children, and caring about the children.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Thank you, Becky, for your comments tonight.
Okay. Thank you, we need to take care of everything else in this town.
We will, and you and I is going to be meeting, thank you.
Indeed we are.
All right.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'd like to invite up Mr. Ray Walters to say a few words tonight. Mr. Walters has Walt's Tavern there off of Route 40 and-
Well, first of all, I want to tell you, I brought a diversity to this meeting by word.
There you go, I love it. Ray, if we could get you to talk into that microphone and give your address and your information, I really would appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Ray Walters, I'm a resident of Newark, Delaware, at 111 Bresside Court, currently looking at property in Elkton, so we'll see how that works out for us. But I wanted to come today, several people I have met through coming up to the tavern, having conversations about the town, some good things, some bad things talked about, but I just want to throw a couple bulletins out, and I believe it's Commissioner Van Rynen, when you said about the grants and everything like that, we've been here about 16 months, Walt's Tavern, I think we're doing a pretty good job, and we have yet to really have, other than one or two people, people from the community, and I'm talking about this community here, come by, acknowledge us, no one has come by from any type of a development committee, no one has come by from any Chamber of Commerce committee, I'm sure you have a Chamber of Commerce here in Cecil County, correct? Is it not somebody's job when new businesses come in to solicit new members to do that? I hope people aren't getting lax in their job and complacent, they just had an election, so hopefully some of the changes will be good. Coming from a different area, a different mentality, lack of a better word, new blood, I was told by a lot of people, when you come to Elkton, nothing will change, because it's an old boy philosophy, good old boy philosophy down there. And I hate to say it, but as I look around the room, I don't see but a handful of people, probably under 50, and, you know, that's, you talked about cancer, Becky, and that's a cancer to a town, when you don't have the young people involved in getting in here. They're not at the meeting, it's not that they don't care, it's just that, are we reaching out, are we making sure they know to care? Because until Mayor Alt really said to me, "Ray, come, shut up, come to the meeting," type of a thing, so, you know, here I am. Again, I just want to throw some numbers out, you want to attract new businesses in. I see a lot of things being done downtown, you have a great new restaurant downtown with an option to come by and do that, that's all wonderful, but as I walk by the different malls out there, I've seen up to 50% vacancy in some of the malls, and every mall has serious vacancies. Somebody once said to me, and I believe it might have been my grandmother, said, "You can't get milk from a dead cow." So you want to be careful that, don't let the outlying areas die as well, you need to get the influences to get those businesses in. Much easier said than done, but be careful not to throw your eggs in one basket, I think is what I'm trying to say.
I agree.
Where my bar is located is referred to as the Redner Shopping Center, and we're not a restaurant, we're a bar that sells some food, unlike some of the finer restaurants that sell alcohol, so we want to be known for that. We catch a lot of the traffic coming and going from Chesapeake City, so we want to buy local, you know, we're kind of keeping some of the business here. You know, stop by, have that drink, unless you want to go down to Chesapeake City and pay $12 for the same drink you can get for probably six or seven at our bar. Kind of the last comment here to wind down, we, our crowd during the day is more of a retired crowd, and people that Becky probably knows half of them, because I think they rival her for years in Cecil County, and in age, and everything like that. But our night crowd is the younger crowd, that 21 to 35-year-old crowd, and again, to take words from Becky about doing for the seniors, let's not forget about the future, the 21 to 35-year-olds, let's do something, let's give them a place in Elkton to come have a good time. There's been several bars that have opened and have had music that have been a disaster by everybody's expectations. I can say, we haven't had many issues yet, because we have security, we do everything like that, the police force has supported us there when we've needed some help and assistance and all like that, and what we talked about, what was mentioned earlier about grants and stuff like that, we want to double our size, and we think we can do it, and we think we can double our business, and we pay some serious taxes there, so obviously that means more income, you know, coming into the town. So I would like to find out when those places are full, where we can get money, borrow money, grant money, whatever it is to improve it, we'd like to do it. I know there's a stigma that goes with alcohol, you know, there is a drug problem in Elkton, and, you know, there's probably alcohol problems in Elkton too, so we need to be careful, we want to manage it, we think we do that. We're looking for all the support we can get. Again, I wanted to come in, introduce myself, throw some of these points out, I'm new blood, I'd like to be involved, I'm up for a challenge, I've owned businesses for 42 years, and I've retired four times, and here I am again, you know, with another business, because I can't sit still. I wanted to introduce myself, last thing is, whenever this business development group or alliance is available, somebody to talk to, I'd like to speak to somebody about that as well.
Very good, I promise you, you will have someone coming down to see you.
Yes, he will.
Okay, well, thank you for the time, and it's nice to see some familiar faces.
And what is the name, and where are you specifically located?
It's Walt's Tavern, it's formerly called Captain Slacks, out there in the Redner Shopping Center, 213-
Right. I'll bring him out.
Okay, there you go.
I'll bring him out.
And I have to say, my daughter and husband do visit your establishment, they're a lot younger than I am, and they are in the evenings, so.
Well, and at nighttime, that, it's really where the young people, there's not a whole lot of options late at night to go in Elkton.
And Charlie, if you have to drag me out, I'll go. Thank you very much, Ray.
Thanks for the time.
And you can't go wrong.
I hear you. Okay, I'd like to invite up Mr. Dwight Hare from Elkton, Maryland, Elkton Forest.
A couple of real short things, main reason I came tonight, and Mayor, you and the commissioners already made it all happen, and I'm proud of you, Minnehans is becoming a big asset to our town, and we need to do everything we can to support them, and I was concerned I'd be in $3,000 in one year, all this stuff, I thought I'd just come in and support that, but you've already done that, that's great. Tell you another thing I'm proud of, Mayor, you got yourself a lawyer now. I shouldn't say this, you got yourself a lawyer now.
Thank you.
He's a guy that's well-recommended in the town of Elkton, he'll make things happen, and I'm sort of saying the guy before didn't, but this guy will. Another thing, I have some, I think some great things are about to happen in Elkton. For example, this senior center across the town is going to bring a lot of seniors downtown, and it's just like the senior center, it seems, for the senior housing over on High Street, when they came into town, us a small business, on Mother's Day, I think my daughter or granddaughter told me, we sent three vanfuls of flowers on Mother's Day to the senior center. Someday soon, I expect within six months, someone's going to open a small grocery store downtown Elkton to support these people, and those people, you know, it'd be a great, there's places, there's buildings in town-
I'm praying for it.
And this is going to turn this town on, and Minnehans do what they're doing, and the town cooperating with them, see, I saw days when that wouldn't have happened, and now you've got a town lawyer, I really feel good about where you're headed, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hare.
Thanks, Mr. Hare.
Okay, I'd like to invite up Margie Blystone.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Margie Blystone, live at 14 John Adams Lane in Patriot Sun, thanks for mentioning the new golf course. I am a co-owner of the Palan Page Downtown, I am a member of the Elkton Alliance Board, I'm the Arts and Entertainment District Chairman of Elkton, and I am here on behalf of Minnehans, basically what Dwight said, we want to see the mayor and commissioners support the local businesses as much as possible, because we're what, we feel very strongly that we are contributing to turning Elkton around, bringing more people downtown, and the more we can support the local businesses, we think that that helps that head us in the right direction, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can I stop, Margie, for one moment? Can you tell how many artists are now involved with the Palan Page?
We currently have 30 artists, we have, I think it's a dozen local authors that we also feature, we have generally used books there, this started in 2009, the Palan Page, or the Artist Co-op, as it was initially known, as a means of bringing art to Elkton, and with the help of my three other co-owners, we have grown the business in the last four years as an LLC, the Palan Page, and continued to grow, and First Friday events are kind of a staple for us, and now we're doing workshops with our artists, so the business is growing leaps and bounds, more than I ever could have imagined, and it all started with the Elkton Alliance as a means of turning an empty business, an empty storefront into a business. So I really appreciate, we really appreciate what the Elkton Alliance has done for us, and hope that we can continue to partner and grow the arts district with the Art Loop that we're hoping to get out to the public and form, to bring more people downtown for First Fridays, and once they see a First Friday, they want to come down all the time. All righty?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, Alejandra?
She had to leave.
She left, okay. Dave Moore. Dave Moore lives at 209 North Street, but I'll let you give that information.
I am Dave Moore, live at 209 North Street, right this block, and I really came tonight because I knew there was going to be some discussion about Minnehans, and I moved here five years ago, just about five years ago, and one of the first people I met was Mary Jo, and I love community, and I haven't been a part of Elkton all my life, but I've been close, I've been in Newark, so I've kind of watched Newark and what they've gone through in Elkton, and I was so excited when Minnehans came in, and what they've done, that's kind of been, become a new part of my community, and I just want to keep encouraging the, all of you to encourage them and bring more people in like them, because it's just tremendous for, it's one of the things that's keeping me here in Elkton. You know, I work in Delaware now, and I've been thinking about moving to Elkton, I mean, moving to Newark, but with all this going on, gives me a place to go on Saturday night, hear live music, see people, meet people, and I love it. And they're so open, you know, going there, watching the World Cup, all the programs they're having, Ingrid was just talking to me last Friday about doing an open mic there, and I have some experience doing that, so, you know, just, I think it's cool, so, want to see.
Give a little plug for your business too, downtown?
Well, I'm with the group, and we rent 213 down there, and we have, we have an open mic cafe on Friday night, Gracie's, and we've been doing that for three years, and it just helps, we have a small church that meets there on Sunday, and so that just helps pay the bills, but it's become a great little community thing, it's not, it's just an open mic, it's open to anyone, and we fill up now every Friday night, and all kinds of music, all kinds of ages and people, and then we, then, those of us who run it, then we go to Minnehans. We try to get everybody else to go, too. And we also have an exercise club, a friend of mine and I are personal trainers, and we do free exercise on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and free yoga on Saturdays, so we're just all about community, and so I just came here to support Minnehans, and support you.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bob Lichtenberg.
I just have a few short statements I can speak about here, I think you can hear me.
Walnut Lane, I know.
Walnut Lane, 105 Walnut Lane, I'm also 75 years old, as Diane, and I'm the youngest one in the back row.
All right. Appreciate it.
My wife and I want to thank you and those on the board that addressed an issue we've had in the past, it's been resolved, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We had a tractor trailer a couple of weeks ago that hit a stop sign on Gilpin and Walnut Lane, and spin stop whatever it may be, the very next morning, that stop sign was replaced, how the town knew it, I don't know, but it was gone on Saturday morning very quickly, and they just replaced the street sign.
I'll take credit for that.
But it's nice to see a crowd of people here at a town council meeting, because in the past, in the land of the three of us, or the four of us, were the only ones who would have attended the meeting.
That's right.
And we were very critical about a lot of issues, sometimes you're right, we're not always wrong, but I just wanted to see people that are here that are interested in what's going on in this town, and I think in a very short time, there's been a lot of, several positive things that are done, we want to thank you guys for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hare.
Okay, well, no one else signed, but I'm going to allow Ms. Danielle, Danielle Carroll-
There you go.
-to come up and say a word, and then I'll get to the birthday girl.
Danielle Carroll, I am at 200 Kentmere Avenue in Elkton, I just wanted to make a comment and a recommendation possibly, heard a lot of talk about economic development and businesses, and if you can't hear already from your audience, this is your economic development, and these are your business owners. I'm a small business banker, I have been in banking for over 10 years, you've got to know the economy, you've got to know your small business owners, they have struggles that are beyond what the town can help with, they have struggles that they go through that you need to be aware of, you need to be able to support on a different level, so just to talk about your economic development plan, I'd recommend to learn about the finance industry, learn about the struggles of small businesses, that's going to help you become that much more valuable when they need to come to town in helping them. The other thing is, as far as a economic development plan, we're in a regulatory environment now, I'm sure you guys know, healthcare industry, banking industry, a plan needs to be a short, long-term plan, if you will, a five-year plan, because there are so many changes happening that you can't really plan too far out into the future, or you're going to stifle yourself before you get there. So I just challenge the board to make yourself educated on the regulations, make yourself educated on the struggles of small business, and to keep your plan concise and focused when you do get together in the coming weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Ms., and congratulations to you, may I say. I'd like to invite Ms. Diane Hare up to say a word.
I don't want to say this too much, but what I, we just today had solar panel put on in our house, we are invited by, tonight, they're scheduled, completed by nine o'clock tonight, they started at eight o'clock this morning, so we were sold on solar panel, so we got it on the house and garage, stopped by and see it, doesn't look bad.
I wonder if there's a way we can hook into that. Maybe we need to put Ms. Diane on our solar panel board. Well, listen, I'd like to have a motion to close this meeting.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.